WDEV News presents. The regular monthly meeting of the Fintress County Commission. The Fintress County Commission meets the third Monday of each month, and you can see it live on Channel 12 Cable TV. It's a presentation of the Union Bank of Jamestown and Clark Range, your reliable banking partner since 1904.
For more than a century, Union Bank has been serving the people of Fintress County. Now, as we begin a new chapter in our history of service, we want to take this opportunity to reassure you that while our building may be new, we're still the same friendly people you have known for years. Union Bank, the same people, the same goals, and the same commitment to you. Union Bank, your locally-owned hometown bank for more than a century, growing to meet your needs. Equ權县领证， member FDIC.
We'll call this meeting to order. We all please rise for the presentation of the colors by the Alvin C. York Color Guard, and we'll have the pledge of the flag by Second District Commissioner Kim Davison, and the opening prayer by Second District Commissioner Rod Williams.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic
Benny Hears.
for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Here.
Robert Cooper.
Here.
Lester Gooding.
Here.
Leon Stapp.
Here.
all.
Mary Cooper.
Here.
White Matthews.
Here.
All present.
All present and accounted for. Let us pray. Let us pray. Our heavenly Father, Lord, we humbly come before you today, Lord, and we give you thanks Our heavenly Father, Lord, we humbly come before you today, Lord, and we give you thanks for this day, Lord. for this day, Lord. We give you thanks for this opportunity to come together, Lord, and talk about the county's We give you thanks for this opportunity to come together, Lord, and talk about the county's business, Lord. business, Lord. Lord, we just pray for wisdom, Lord, that you would, you'd put your wisdom upon us, Lord, we just pray for wisdom, Lord, that you would, you'd put your wisdom upon us, Lord, so we could be better servants to our community, Lord, and, Lord, we could be an Lord, so we could be better servants to our community, Lord, and, Lord, we could be an example that you'd have us to be. example that you'd have us to be. Lord, we pray for our county, and everything that's done here is in honor of you. Lord, we pray for our county, and everything that's done here is in honor of you. In Jesus' name we pray. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen. Amen.
May it always be. May it always be.
We'd like to thank you all for coming tonight. We'd like to thank you all for coming tonight. Ms. Maryland, if you'd care to read the roll, please. Ms. Maryland, if you'd care to read the roll, please.
Mickey McDonald. Mickey McDonald.
Here. Here.
Justin Miller. Justin Miller.
Here. Here.
Rod Williams. Rod Williams.
Here. Here.
Kim Davison. Kim Davison.
Here.
Benny Hears.
Here.
Robert Cooper.
Here.
Lester Gooding.
Here.
Leon Stapp.
Here.
Mary Cooper.
Here.
All present.
All present and accounted for. I would like to read this just for a second before we go any further. It is from Rebecca Foster, the district director for Congressman John Rose. They will have an office here, won't have an office, but they'll be here at the Fintress County Courthouse in the ECD Room on Wednesday, March the 13th, from 1:00 to 2:00 p.m. This is the first of monthly meetings where Rebecca will be available for Fintress County constituents to voice questions or concerns. Please let the people of your district know that they can call the county executive's office to find out the date and time of the next scheduled monthly meetings. She plans on being here to represent Congressman Rose on the Wednesday, probably be the third Wednesday. But anyway, she'll have, they will be here one Wednesday a month, and there will be a notification in the paper and all such. Has everyone had a chance to look over the minutes from last month? If you have, I need a motion for that, please.
So move.
Motion made by Lester Gooding, a second.
Second.
Second by Rod Williams. You'll call the roll, Maryland, please.
Mickey.
Four.
Justin.
Four.
Rod.
Four.
Kim.
Four.
Benny.
Four.
Robert.
Four.
Lester.
Four.
Leon.
Four.
Mary.
Four.
Wade.
Four.
Ten, four, and none against. Just like we have on the notaries, we have a total of six, three new and three renewals. The new ones, we have Melanie Phillips, Charlene Bennett, Michelle Jones. The renewals, we have Sharon Davis, Kimberly Franklin, and Justin Tyler Arms. Do I hear a motion to approve those?
So.
Motion by Commissioner Davison. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Hughes. Call the roll, please.
Larry.
Four.
Wade.
Four.
Benny.
Four.
Robert.
Four.
Lester.
Four.
Leon.
Four.
Rod.
Four.
Kim.
Four.
Justin.
Four.
Mickey.
Four.
Ten, four, none against.
Ten, four, none against. Our next is a proclamation honoring David Knatsir, a sophomore at Alvin C. York High School, for the earning, the prestigious rank of Eagle Scout.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Gooding to approve, a second by Commissioner McDonald. Mr. David, before I read the proclamation, would you care to give us some insight on what you built and what you did during this?
At the American Legion Post 137, I presented them with a veterans memorial monument to honor all veterans and to thank them for what they've done to support.
The proclamation reads, "Of the Board of Commissioners for Fintress County, Tennessee, in honor of David Knatsir. Whereas David Knatsir has earned his prestigious Eagle Scout rank on December 27, 2018, whereas David is the second Eagle Scout from Fintress County this year. David recently attended the 2018 Eagle Scout Recognition Banquet in Knoxville on March 1, 2019. His court of honor is scheduled for Saturday, May 18, 2019. And whereas the rank of Eagle Scout may be earned by a Boy Scout who has been a Life Rank Scout for at least six months, has earned a minimum of 21 merit badges, has demonstrated the scout spirit, and has demonstrated leadership within his troop, team, crew, or ship. Additionally, he must plan, develop, and lead a service project, the Eagle Project, that demonstrates both leadership and a commitment on duty. Whereas David's Eagle Scout project was completed this fall, he chose to design, develop, and place a veterans memorial monument at the American Legion Post 137 in honor of all service members. Whereas David is a sophomore at Alvin C. York Agricultural Institute and is involved in many activities, he has a standing 4.0 GPA, an interact club member, as well as a member of the National Honor Society. Whereas David's plans are to graduate college and become a successful optometrist and establish to maintain a well-organized practice. Now therefore, the Fintress County Executive's Office and Fintress County Board of Commission formally express their congratulations to David Knatsir for winning this prestigious award and setting the example of leadership, willingness, and commitment to Fintress County, proclaimed this 11th day of March, 2019. Signed Jimmy Johnson, County Executive, attested by Marilyn Stevens, County Court Clerk, and our Fifth District Commissioners, Mr. Larry Cooper and Wade Matthews, will present him with this at this time." And this is standing at the American Legion Building, and it is very, I've seen it a couple times, it's a very nice, it is very nice. Our next item, proclamation recognizing the Sergeant York Center for Peace and Valor as a worthy endeavor. We have a proclamation for that. Ms. Deborah, would you care to say a few words before it's read, please?
Sure. Thank you very much. I'm Deborah York, and I'm the Executive Director of the Sergeant York Patriotic Foundation. As most of you know, the historic building was built by Sergeant York after World War I in 1927. It's on the National Historic Registry. It's been elevated to a building of national significance. The Sergeant York Patriotic Foundation acquired the deed with conditions in 2009. We had to meet three requirements before the State Building Commission would approve us having the deed. One was architectural renderings through an adaptive reuse plan. The second was the intended use for the site, and the third was a business plan about how to get there. So we actually went before the State Building Commission and acquired a permanent deed to the building in 2015. The last few years, we've been working to get our campaign together and to launch an international campaign to restore the building. We launched last year in the private, kind of what they call the silent phase, and now we're going into the public phase of the campaign. We modeled the programming as well as the title around Sergeant York and his Medal of Honor. So the programming is going to focus on youth, it's going to focus on veterans, and it's going to focus on higher education, trade skills, and it's basically wanting to breathe life back into the building and give back to the community. So we want it to be advantageous for everyone in the community to support tourism, to support economic development, and to be a beacon of hope for our community as well as the light outside of our community. It is a national treasure. It's the only building like its kind in the entire nation, and so we're just really excited to be moving on to this next phase. We just completed architectural renderings through the Design Innovation Architects in Knoxville, Tennessee, and they actually specialize in historic restoration, and I'd be happy to pass the pictures around. They did a phenomenal job breathing life back into the site. So basically, it's going to be the Sergeant York Center for Peace and Valor, and the programming will be based on the tenets of the Medal of Honor, which are courage, sacrifice, commitment, service, integrity, patriotism, and citizenship. And I can't think of a time in my life, in this world, where we need more focus on those key elements of our founding, our founding fathers, our morals, our values, and what really matters in America. So we hope to have your support. We're very appreciative of this proclamation, and we look forward to working with you in the future.
Thank you, Ms. Deborah. At this time, Commissioner Rod Williams will read the proclamation, please. Leave it where you want to. You can go up there if you want to.
This is a proclamation in the Board of Fintress County Commission, recognizing the Sergeant York Center for Peace and Valor as a worthy endeavor. Whereas Fintress County Commission is the newly-elected body of Fintress County, Tennessee, a municipal corporation under the law of the state of Tennessee. Whereas Fintress County Commission has the duty to serve the best interest of its citizens of Fintress County, Tennessee. Whereas the Sergeant York Center of Peace and Valor will serve the citizens of Fintress County, the state of Tennessee, and the great nation of these United States of America by continuing the most honorable legacy of Alvin, Cole, and York that involved with enduring purpose his mission of creating a better world through the advancement and preparation of peace through education, outreach, upholding the fundamental tenets of the Medal of Honor, courage, commitment, sacrifice, patriotism, integrity, and citizenship. Whereas the Sergeant York Center of Peace and Valor will stand resolutely in the service of peace for the fundamental tenets of the Medal of Honor by developing and sponsoring programming, providing space for educational and civic activities, and devoting all valuable resources toward the betterment of and between all persons with the emphasis on strengthening and inspiring the youth, honoring and healing veterans, and serving at the risk populations and of the communities in which they live and strive to contribute. Whereas the Sergeant York Center of Peace and Valor will provide space for educational programs aimed at involving access and opportunities by the historical underprivileged and address economic disparities through vocational and technical training in support of communities-based initiatives. Whereas the Sergeant York Center of Peace and Valor will support character development by providing young people with education and leadership, community, communication, and conflict resolution. Whereas the Sergeant York Center of Peace and Valor will sponsor, support, educate, and encourage people, organizations, and institutions toward creating and maintaining open dialogue and positive working relationships between themselves and others on behalf of justice, inclusivity, stability, and fairness to one fellow man. Whereas the Sergeant York Center of Peace and Valor will provide a forum founded on the principles of peace and valor that represents inclusivity and moral courage, working expression that welcomes opposing viewpoints towards respectful resolutions of issues and development of positive future outcomes. Whereas the Sergeant York Center of Peace and Valor will continue in its historic endeavor and footprint in service to its community as a source of inspiration, enlightenment, and strength, and as a beacon to all those who seek a better way. Whereas the Fintress County Commission, on the 11th day of March of the year of our Lord, 2019, wished to recognize Fintress County, or recognize Sergeant York Center of Peace and Valor as a worthy endeavor to improve and inspire the citizens of Fintress County, the upper Cumberland, the state of Tennessee, and beyond, and as a project to foster positive economic and community growth, development, and keeping with our own service to this community.
Get one real quick. Let's get a photo there, Rod, real quick. Get a picture with Ms. Deborah. We already voted on them, didn't we? I thought we did. We can't. Okay. I hear a motion to accept their proclamation. Commissioner Cooper, seconded by Commissioner Miller. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Contrary, likewise. Motion passes. Our next item is consideration of approval of Resolution 2019-05 authorizing the submission of a Victims of Crime Act grant to obtain a victim coordinator for Fintress County. General Effler, would you like to address that before I read the proclamation, please, sir?
Yes, sir. Mr. Executive and Board of Commissioners, I'm Jared Effler, and I have the privilege of serving as your district attorney. When I was elected district attorney in 2014, Fintress County did not have a full-time district attorney's office. And I'm a firm believer that if we're going to provide services to our citizens, we must be there where those services are needed. And consistent with that, when I was elected, we opened an office here in Fintress County and had one victim witness coordinator and one full-time assistant district attorney. We've been able to expand our services. We've moved into a larger office now. Most of you know where that's at. We had an open house. It's beside Moody's across from West End Cafe. But our workload continues to increase, not only in Fintress County but across the four other counties that I serve. So much so, the days when we have court, Brian Powell, your victim witness, your full-time victim witness coordinator here, is required to go to court, and then we're required to shuffle staff from other counties in order to ensure that the doors remain open to provide services to our citizens here in Fintress County. What this grant presents is an opportunity to have an additional support staff here in Fintress County. Currently, we have two assistant district attorneys, that this is their station, Jamestown, along with Mr. Powell, our victim witness coordinator. So this would be a grant to provide another support person to help the victims of crime here in Fintress County. The good news about this grant is it would not cost the taxpayers of Fintress County anything. This is an 80/20 match revoked of Victims of Crime Act, which is administered through the Office of Criminal Justice Program in Nashville. These are federal monies that Fintress County would act as the pass-through for this position. The match can be met in kind, which means that my office can provide this match by providing supervision for this additional coordinator and also providing space for this additional coordinator. We may or may not get the position, but we do not know until we try. So I'm here tonight asking Fintress County, asking the Board of Commissioners to authorize your county executive to apply for this grant in hopes that we can expand our services even more to victims of crime here in our county, and I'll be glad to entertain any questions that you may have.
How long does this last?
I believe it's a three-year grant.
Then it'll probably come through to be up again, hopefully. Do I hear a motion?
I make a motion.
For our proclamation?
I'll second.
Rod made the motion. Commissioner Williams. Commissioner Goodman. Gooding made the second. Sorry, Lester. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, likewise. The proclamation reads, "Resolution of the governing body of Fintress County. Resolution 2019-5, resolution authorizing the submission of a Victims of Crime Act grant for the position of Fintress County Victim Coordinator. Whereas Fintress County, Tennessee, is eligible for grant funds under the Victims of Crime Act program administered by the Department of Finance and Administration, Office of Criminal Justice Program. Whereas the role of the victim coordinator is to help crime victims navigate the court system by acting as a liaison between the victim and the prosecutor. The victim coordinator will provide assistance to victims in a myriad of ways by providing high-quality services and directly improve the health and well-being of victims of crime with priority given to victim of child abuse, domestic violence, sexual assault, and services for previously undeserved victims. Whereas the fund from the grant will pay the full salary of the victim coordinator. Their required match is 80/20. Federal funds may be used to pay up to 80% of the cost of the project. Their remaining 20% share must be in cash match from non-federal funds or in-kind match from non-federal funds. Whereas Fintress County intends to utilize an in-kind match for the VOCA grant. Qualifying in-kind match may include donations of expendable equipment, office supplies, workshop, or classroom materials, workspace, or monetary value of time contributed by professional and technical personnel and other skilled and unskilled labor if the services they provide are an integral and necessary part of a funded project. Whereas the Eighth District Attorney's General Office will be administering the VOCA grant on behalf of Fintress County as well as providing the office space and oversight of the victim coordinator. The 20% match will be fully met by the in-kind services provided by the District Attorney General's Office. Whereas if awarded, the grant contract term will begin July 2019, ending June 2022. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Fintress County Executive Office be authorized to execute and submit an application for the VOCA grant for a victim coordinator to the Office of Criminal Justice Program to obtain said available funds, entering to the necessary agreements with OCJP to receive said grant funds without further action by the county commission contingent upon approval by the funding agency. Approved and so ordered this 11th day of March, 2019, the public welfare requiring. Approved Jimmy Johnson, Fintress County Executive, attested by Marilyn Stevens, Fintress County Court Clerk. Our next item is consideration of approval of Resolution 2019-04 authorizing the submission of the Tennessee Highway Safety Office Grant application for the fiscal year 2019-2020. Is Jason here? Sheriff Reagan.
You didn't call for the voting on the motion, the second one, for the previous resolution for the... Always, didn't we? No, that was the one. Rod and Lester made the motion on this one. We didn't vote on it, though.
He said everybody said aye.
I mean...
I thought he said everybody, oh.
Okay, we'll back up one step. Sheriff, just wait just a moment. Okay. All in favor of the motion, prior?
Aye.
All opposed, likewise. Okay, Sheriff, you're up.
The grant, is it 100% as always? There's no match, but we don't know how much money we'd be getting if we applied for it. We just need your... ...proof of what we can apply for.
Do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Commissioner Hughes made the motion. Mr. Robert Cooper made the second. If you don't care, call the roll, Ms. Maryland.
Mickey.
Four.
Justin.
Four.
Rod.
Four.
Kim.
Four.
Benny.
Four.
Robert.
Four.
Lester.
Four.
Leon.
Four.
Mary.
Four.
Wade.
Four.
Ten, four, none against. Our next item is consideration of Resolution 2019-06 authorizing the acceptance of the 2019 Access to Health Through Healthy Activity Built Environment Grant. And what this was, Mr. Andy Langford from the Health Department here, he came into the office and he had some money. He thought we could get through a grant to, for some type of physical exercise and such. We, he had like a deadline of seven days after he brought it in, so we had called a couple places, and then we actually thought then that we might be able to do it for the food bank and possibly the security lines at South Fintress Park, but it had to be some type of physical activity. He had mentioned ball goals and children's playground equipment and such, so with such short notice, we contacted the city of Allard, and they agreed and was very, very much happy and agreeable to try to accept this, and so I believe that's where it's going to go. It will be working on their playground equipment and the park out there at, in Allard. Like I said, they were very, very acceptance of it, and they were very appreciative of it, and it will be, we will apply for it, and they will, the money will come from us, and then we'll be reimbursed, reimbursed, for I believe it's up to $20,000 that it will help Allard to get their parks situated a little bit, a little bit better than what it is right now. Do I hear a motion for that?
So.
Sheriff Cooper made the motion, seconded by...
My seconded.
Lester Goodman. Is there any discussion on it? Any discussion?
I got you right that time.
No, you didn't.
Lester Gooding?
You said man.
I'm sorry.
It's two.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Contrary. Discussion of the 2015 Delinquent Tax Sale, corrected date of June 14, 2019. Ms. Leslie Ledbetter, would you address that, please?
Just briefly, I think last meeting you all voted and said it for June 21st, 2019, for the 2015 delinquent taxes due. However, at the very same time, Judge McAfee sent over an order scheduling like a five-day trial that week, so he will be actually in the courtroom, using the courtroom that day, so he asked us to move it up a week if possible, and that wasn't any issue with the Circuit Court Clerk's office. So we've agreed a better time for that is June 14 versus June 21. Same notice is we'll all go out, this is why we do this so early, is so that anything does come up, we can amend that. But we've done so, changing that to June 14 of 2019. Only for the 2015 taxes, the '16, '17s, other ones that are not a part of that will not be the basis for the sale. They also included if you owe for the '15, but that's the particular tax you're, this sale will include.
Do I hear a motion to that effect?
Make a motion to approve it.
Motion made to approve by Commissioner Lester Gooding.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Mickey McDonald. Roll call, please.
Mickey.
Four.
Justin.
Four.
Rod.
Four.
Kim.
Four.
Lester.
Four.
Leon.
Four.
Benny.
Four.
Robert.
Four.
Larry.
Four.
Wade.
Four.
Ten, four, none, against.
Ten, four, zero, against, motion passes. Consideration of either opting in or out of the pre-65 retiree health insurance plan for eligible members. Tyler, Becky, want to address this?
What this is, is the state requires us to either opt in or out of HOPEP or other post-employment benefits. What they're doing is now, in the past, they've reflected this into the footnotes of our audit, now do we, in the actual balance sheet of our audit? We can opt in, stay in at this point, and then opt out at a later time. If we opt out, it is permanent. You cannot opt in at a later date. Questions?
Anything else? Beck, you have anything to say on this?
Does anybody have questions as far as what the liability actually is?
Do I hear a motion to this effect?
I'll make the motion to opt in.
Robert Cooper made a motion to opt in. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Wade Matthews. Roll call vote, please.
Mickey.
Four.
Justin.
Four.
Benny.
Four.
Robert.
Four.
Larry.
Four.
Wade.
Four.
Lester.
Four.
Leon.
Four.
Rod.
Four.
Kim.
Four.
Ten, four, none, against.
Motion passes. Our next one is discussion of the Fentress County Work Session. It was voted on back earlier last, in the fall last year to have our work sessions recorded and taped, and this one also. We had some conflict with some games, some basketball games and such, so in the future they will be recorded. The question here is, do you want to continue your work session and then go into the regular meeting, which is basically the same information that you would hear in the work session. It'll be, it'll be recorded, the regular meeting will be recorded, so it'll be up to y'all if you want to continue your work session or just have the work session and the regular meeting included into the same thing at 6:00 PM.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir, Mr. Gooden.
I would make the motion to do away with the work session and have everything in here.
Second. The motion has been made by Commissioner Lester Gooding to forego the work sessions and have all business taken care of in the regular court meeting.
Second.
Had a second by Commissioner Miller. Roll call vote.
Mickey.
Any discussion? Any further discussion? Roll call vote? No. Yeah, roll call vote.
Mickey.
Four.
Justin.
Four.
Benny.
Four.
Robert.
Four.
Rod.
Against.
Kim.
Four.
Lester.
Four.
Leon.
Four.
Larry.
Four.
Wade.
Against.
Eight, four, two, against, motion passes. The next item, consideration of surplus equipment and vehicles from the Sheriff's Department. Sheriff Reagan?
Yes, I've got some vehicles, some of the police over programs, some of them drug seizures, some of it's like them old white Crown vehicles, my vehicles took off the road and abandoned vehicle is what I'm asking for permission for. You got a copy of it?
Yes.
Has everybody had time to look over that? Do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Lester Gooding. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Mickey McDonald. Roll call vote.
Mickey.
Four.
Justin.
Four.
Rod.
Four.
Kim.
Four.
Benny.
Four.
Robert.
Four.
Lester.
Four.
Leon.
Four.
Larry.
Before I vote, these are going to be on GovDeals, correct? This is on public auction.
Right.
So is there any way that we can get a little note, put in the paper, maybe give them a little brief description, how people can go to GovDeals to look at this, to bid on it, and then put it up?
Or did it last?
Did it last time, too? Four.
Wade.
Four.
Ten, four, none, against.
Ten, four, none, against. Our next item, I believe, yep. Cinder citizens fundraising monthly amendment in a total of $311. That's basically the same as this every month. Need a motion to approve that?
So moved.
So moved by Commissioner Miller. Second.
Second.
Commissioner Rod Williams for the second. Roll call vote.
Larry.
Four.
Wade.
Four.
Benny.
Four.
Robert.
Four.
Mickey.
Four.
Justin.
Four.
Rod.
Four.
Kim.
Four.
Lester.
Four.
Leon.
Four.
Ten, four, none, against.
Motion passes. The next item, solid waste moving funds from other supplies and materials into advertising in the amount of $77.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Kim Davison.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Robert Cooper. Any discussion? Roll call vote.
Mickey.
Four.
Justin.
Four.
Rod.
Four.
Kim.
Four.
Benny.
Four.
Robert.
Four.
Lester.
Four.
Leon.
Four.
Larry.
Four.
Wade.
Four.
Ten, four, none, against.
Motion passes. The next one, Fentress County Highway Department decreasing expenditures in highway and bridge maintenance foreman and increasing expenditures in capital outlet surplus equipment in the amount of $59,500. Road Supervisor Joy Reagan, would you like to come up and address that, please?
Plowing funds out of one line item into another?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion being made by Commissioner Hughes, second by Commissioner McDonald. Any question?
Is this a position you're having to do away with, or?
Wade's been away with it, we just transfer.
Okay.
Is it vacant at this time, Joy? Is that what it is?
Okay, okay.
Moving the money over until I got?
Roll call vote.
Mickey.
Four.
Justin.
Four.
Rod.
Four.
Kim.
Four.
Benny.
Four.
Robert.
Four.
Lester.
Four.
Leon.
Four.
Larry.
Four.
Wade.
Four.
Ten, four, none, against, motion passes. Thank you, Joy. Fentress County Sheriff's Department in the amount of $2,176.82 for sheriff's budget reimbursement from the drug fund. Sheriff Reagan?
What was, it was a couple employees that had quit and got paid money for the drug fund money, and actually I think they paid it out of the wrong line item, I think they need to reimburse the money back in the drug fund or revise first.
Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Miller, second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Robert Cooper. Roll call vote, please.
Benny.
Four.
Robert.
Four.
Lester.
Four.
Leon.
Four.
Larry.
Four.
Wade.
Four.
Mickey.
Four.
Justin.
Four.
Rod.
Four.
Kim.
Four.
Ten, four, none, against.
Motion passes. Fentress County Sheriff's Department in the amount of $1,722.85 to receive funds from the Tennessee Highway Safety Office Grant and place into the appropriate line items. Sheriff Reagan?
It's where we get money from working DUI time or seatbelt violations whenever we get to, some officer gets to work overtime, and we get money from the state to work it.
Make a motion to approve.
Commissioner Lester Gooden made the motion, second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Davison. Roll call vote.
Larry.
Four.
Wade.
Four.
Lester.
Four.
Leon.
Four.
Rod.
Four.
Kim.
Four.
Mickey.
Four.
Justin.
Four.
Benny.
Four.
Robert.
Four.
Ten, four, none, against.
Motion passes. Fentress County Sheriff's Office in the amount of $10,800. This is to receive money from the State Post Commission for salary supplements to pay full-time certified officers for their required in-service training. Sheriff Reagan?
It's from the state where we get a supplement to certified officers if you get the DUI like they're supposed to every year, 40 years a year, whatever, and we get a supplement from the state, which is $600, to be 18 full-time officer.
Do I hear a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Commissioner Davison made the motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Robert Cooper. Any discussion? Roll call vote, Marilyn.
Benny.
Four.
Robert.
Four.
Lester.
Four.
Leon.
Four.
Larry.
Four.
Wade.
Four.
Mickey.
Four.
Justin.
Four.
Rod.
Four.
Kim.
Four.
Ten, four, none, against, motion passes. Our next items are from the Fentress County School Board amendments. On this line here, they have 15 total movements. Wish someone would have been, do you know what this is about, maybe Tyler?
This is budget amendments, the reason that we dropped these is the majority of these involve payroll line items, and they brought them as a chunk, so I'll present them to you all as a chunk, it's past that budget, but talked to Ben today, and according to Ben, we can pass these together all in one, but you just have to be aware of the payroll ones in there, so I mean, if you guys want to put $30 of their payroll in there, primarily, it looks to me like most of it has to do with their retirement, and according to Mary Ann, that is from 2014, I think, if you were employed after 2014, bill now, it's a hybrid retirement where part of it goes through TCRS and part of it goes through 401K.
We just take both these at the same time?
According to Ben, we can pass them as a group as long as we show that functions are aware that their payroll line items do exist.
And we want to take a few minutes just to look through that real quick?
I think the two that are listed are different funds, so it doesn't want to be two different funds.
We'll do that. Give you a minute there. Do I hear a motion on the first line?
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Stepp, second by? Need a second, please?
Second.
Second by Commissioner McDonald. Roll call vote.
Larry.
Against.
Wade.
Four.
Benny.
Four.
Robert.
Four.
Lester.
Against.
Leon.
Four.
Mickey.
Four.
Justin.
Four.
Rod.
Four.
Kim.
Against.
Seven, four, three, against.
Seven, four, three, against, that line item passes. The next one is movement of three lines for Fund 142. Tyler, you want to address that?
That's similar situation, I think, involved payroll line item transfers, I think with 142, they're making two more in here. Looks to me like in this, they're written in that budget, they're coming from in-service staff development, moving that to other charters. They've submitted some supporting documentation with this through here. It's to do with the line that will be altered by the end of the year, moving money. But it's coming from 524, which is, this one doesn't, this one doesn't really involve a payroll line item, it does appear.
Do I hear a motion on this line item?
Now honestly, on this one, I don't think that you guys have to vote necessarily for this one, it doesn't involve a payroll line item change. It came with a group of budget amendments that makes sense, every one of these are together, so. Which I thought we had three for 142, I'm just showing one here. I've just got one in my packet here.
There was two on your counter, where your packet was laying. The one that Justin brought down today.
Okay, I got those in the bag.
Want some more? Do I hear a motion for this line item?
Those other two do involve payroll line items, one is.
But this has to do with some type of money though, doesn't it, movement, so?
Yeah.
We have to vote on it.
That one's state retirement, same situation.
We have to vote on it, anytime there's money involved, we have to vote.
But it doesn't change your total budget though, does it?
No.
It's just one of the.
Those other two involve the retirement, same situation as the 141. They involve that retirement movement from state retirement to hybrid retirement.
Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion made by Robert Cooper to approve, do I hear a second?
Second, Dan.
Second by Leon Stepp. Any discussion? Roll call.
One question. When they send these over, can we have somebody from the school board come to talk to us about this, or?
We sure can. It's been, it's been asked for anyone, it's been asked for anyone that's doing any type of a budget amendment to have somebody here to represent whatever the budget, what office or whatever the budget's coming from, anytime there's a movement wanting to be made. After we get through this and new business, you can make that motion if you want to. Roll call vote.
Larry.
Four.
Wade.
Four.
Benny.
Four.
Robert.
Four.
Lester.
Four.
Leon.
Four.
Mickey. Justin.
Ford.
Rod.
Four.
Kim.
Against.
Nine, four, one, against.
Nine, four, one, against, motion passes. Is there any other business?
Well, how does that motion need to be made? That we have someone, if they're going to present budget or amendments, at least have somebody here to represent.
Anybody from any department. That's your motion.
Yeah.
Motion has been made by Commissioner Rod Williams. And in the future, if there is money movement or concerning money, that someone present from that office be here to explain what the money movement is for. Do I hear? Commissioner Lester Gooding made the second.
Is that just for the school board?
That's for any office.
Any office.
Any office. Any office. Roll call vote.
Mickey.
Four.
Justin.
Ford.
Rod.
Ford.
Kim.
Four.
Benny.
Four.
Robert.
Four.
Lester.
Four.